The March Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, we will start with a roll call. Drew Falk.
James White.
Elizabeth.
Allison Miller.
Colin Forsythe.
Simon Farbar.
Very good. And it looks like we have a few gentlemen from the community in attendance tonight. So, uh, gentlemen, if you would do me a favor, just introduce yourself. And tell us why you're here and what are your plans after high school?
Going up here again?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're on the spot.
Uh, my name is Ethan Davis. And you said plans after high school?
Yeah.
Um, going to a four-year college at Boise State.
Nice.
Start on.
Uh, my name is Ari Northrup, and then I also plan to attend Boise State next fall for four years.
Very cool.
My name is Will B. Simon. I'm not going to Boise State. I'm gonna go play football in college. I don't know where yet.
All right.
Take a destination unknown.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully Washington State. Let's go.
Yeah.
All right, uh, we thank you, gentlemen. Uh, have two months of previous meeting minutes to approve. Uh, so January and February. Those are attached to the packet. Any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
I move to approve the planning commission minutes from January eighth and February fifth, twenty twenty five.
I second.
All right. All right, so we will.
I'm sure you got a vote.
All, all, sorry, all in favor of. And is unanimous. Thank you.
Motion passed.
Good.
Good.
Yes.
I knew he wasn't gonna say that.
All right, uh, first topic on our agenda tonight is we're gonna pick up the, uh, eighteen thirty-six dot oh thirty-five accessory dwelling units. Um, so we had some discussion last time, Maggie. Uh, we give you a little bit of homework, um, here to look at some potential impact on a three thousand versus six thousand square foot. Sites, uh, in potential percentage versus fixed. Increased use of land. Would you like to?
I probably didn't do a great job, uh, doing, but, um. Yeah, so I, if you look at, sorry, I'm trying to scroll on furniture screen, so everyone's with us. Um. I added kind of the language that we discussed, but I'm not sure if I hit it on the head or not. So. Um, we talked about the need for, everything else was pretty cool to, except for lot coverage. We wanted to look at, um, uh, anyways.
Control plus.
Thank you for those that are prepared with this. Uh, so this is what I heard from, from you all last time is that we want to increase lot coverage. Shouldn't worry the second ADU, or do we want to do first and second?
I was in favor of, I mean, if you're gonna increase the density, I feel like you should give the.
The first ADU as well.
Exactly, the increase in lot coverage. That, that was my, when we left that conversation, that was, I just.
I re-listened and re-listened and I couldn't figure it out. So in agreement, are you okay with? If they, if they're a single family and they propose an ADU, we're gonna increase lot for first. Okay. So I wrote this wrong, uh, but that's why we're discussing it. First, um. And this says, so my first item was maximum lot coverage required by the underlying zoning district shall be required for the first. Three thousand square feet of wire. This is where we're looking at lot area. It will allow to increase lot coverage by five percent for each additional thousand square feet. Um. I looked at the lot coverage required by the underlying zoning district with the five percent increase in lot coverage. And this would be per ADU, correct? And so second.
It would increase with each one?
Each one. So, and when, so.
So coverage increases with density?
And so I wanted to find this, because when we do like our ten percent deviation, we look at the square foot, like what thirty-five percent is, then we take ten percent of that. Are we looking at, if it's thirty-five percent, we want to increase to forty percent for the first, forty-five percent for the second? So I want to clarify that in this language, it is not super clear.
Uh, would you just add a wording in there to say, and then additive manner or like?
Yeah, like, and, and it could be interpretation. I just. Cause, so right now we have a ten percent deviation, and I don't go from thirty-five to forty-five right now. I go from thirty-five to thirty-eight point five percent. That is a ten percent deviation for our current code for the deviation.
Thank you.
So I, um, missed this whole prior discussion, so you'll probably have to repeat.
Yeah.
Something for me, but. I am curious why it is. Written. That. Like you only start to get a bonus if the lot is greater than three thousand square feet and why it's not just like. Like, why is it connected to the lot area? Because it's already a percentage.
So this was in either or. We talked about doing it based on, so like this wouldn't be in the code, sorry. I put per our discussion, we had two options that we discussed, and it was either one or the other, not both. So we were looking at like, okay, if you look at three thousand square foot lot, they, they're stuck with thirty-five percent lots, a thousand, they get a bonus per additional thousand square feet. I think where we landed was we were, we were happier with the percentage, just doing it. That would make it easier for STEM.
Yeah.
To be like, hey, if you have three thou- three thousand square foot lot or a six thousand square foot lot, you get the bonus if you're adding density because you're adding lot.
I do wonder though, like, for eight thousand square foot lots. Do they? Do we want to give a density bonus?
Well, but I mean, it's.
For a single family?
It's a.
So here's an example.
The, the amount of lot coverage you could get on an eight thousand square foot lot is pretty significant.
And eight thousand.
And I'm not saying I know the answer. I'm just. As a thought and discussion.
Yeah.
You know, if we're given forty-five percent lot coverage on eight thousand square foot lot, that's a lot of lot coverage.
But there, there, but you would be increasing, you, you would imagine that if in this situation, we're talking about a, so we're thinking about infill housing. So we're talking about an eight thousand square foot lot with an existing SFR, and we're talking about adding two eighty U's to increase the coverage to even make it, uh, forty-four hundred or something like that. Doesn't seem. I mean, or it wouldn't even be forty-four hundred, would it be thirty-eight hundred? So I, for the total lot coverage, do it with.
Yeah.
Second eighty, thirty-six hundred.
But you're still, you're still capped at three units, right? And.
Yeah.
And even, even at.
I feel like it doesn't sway that much.
Eight thousand square foot instead of.
I mean, uh. I, I had not put any thought into it before I said that. I just wanted to.
So here's an example.
Thought into it.
Mm-hmm.
So here's an example. This is a building from I did, so I'm sorry for all the color coding. But this was a six, this lot was about. What was it? A little over six thousand, so it's six thousand two hundred twenty-eight square feet. So if you look at the color coding here, I, I did the pink and the, it off the property lines. The yellow is the house, the orange is the driveway, green is just basement. So don't look at any of those, just look at the yellow. That's what the current lot coverage is. And they got a, they, they did do a ten percent deviation because this house includes an interior ADU over the garage. This is currently two units. It's at over thirty-five, it's at thirty-eight point five percent. Uh, if we were to add, allow them to go up forty percent, that's only a little over three hundred square feet that they can add. So when you look at that in a sense of, like, this already has two units, we want to add a third. Uh, I didn't calculate the forty-five percent. I don't know what that would be, but look at that limited amount. But again, but in this example, I allowed them to go into the rear yard setback. So that's another thing we need to look at, is our current setbacks are fifteen feet in the rear. If you're on an alley, you can go up to eight feet. This would be the, what I have here is if we allow an eight-foot setback for a rear yard, if you're doing a, an ADU. Um. Right, I know it's really hard to see, I'm sorry. If I zoom in, like, right here is the, okay, yeah, right here is that, um, fifteen-foot rear end setback is right here.
Okay.
So like, looking at a house that's already maxed out, if it's a six thousand square foot lot. Currently, I don't think they could include an ADU anyway.
Well, not a thir- a second.
Not a second. Right now they have one interior. They have not included a second one.
I have a three hundred square foot ADU.
So they do have one interior.
But that's a three hundred square foot ADU, but with the setback change.
With the setback.
With this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to have a setback.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if we also, like, I wanted to open up the conversation to like.
Increasing density also gives you, uh, further setback?
Right. A setback bonus too, because we allow accessory structures right now up to eight feet. So we do allow approachment in some areas. It would just be if you're going to do a, an accessory dwelling unit, it can be at that eight-foot setback, just like a garage or a top.
Can, can one of you give a brief rundown on why we have a fifteen-foot setback?
I have no idea.
Well, I would have one question is, is if we change this to the denser you go, the smaller your setbacks, are we gonna create? Kind of, I mean, I, I hate to use this term like this, but like bad neighbors where somebody comes in and maxes everything out and just kind of pushes so close to everyone that it's. Slightly uncomfortable. I'm just trying to talk from a, a, a different perspective. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm thinking of, at what, I mean, uh, uh, Councilman Hesberg pushed back quickly when we talked about, uh, RL three. Because, oh, that would double the density in my neighborhood. I feel like this sort of a thing, if we, you know, if you. Continue the density growth and you allow the setbacks to get smaller as you get bigger, it feels like you could have some really neighbors that creep in on their other neighbors and make. I don't know, the current zoning kind of seemed.
Do we, do we have to combine, uh, setback allowance with a height?
Yeah.
Cap?
For sure.
So I mean, I think there's a, there's a two-way.
There you go. That's a really good call. So if it's, if it's one story, you allow it there, but if it's, that's actually, James has a great point there.
Free, it can encroach.
Yeah.
It's two stories.
Or, or, or if it's within a height, not one story, but within a height.
Yeah.
Twenty feet.
One twenty-foot height.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a, that's a very good point.
So again, the, the, the problem that's happening in neighborhoods is not the.
Would that be?
Yeah.
So vertical growth next to it.
You don't want to encourage one all the same.
Wait, wait, wait. So.
Conversation, please, guys.
Happen at one story.
Okay.
The, the microphone picks up everything, so when I review the notes.
It's chaos.
It's, yeah, there's just.
I'm sorry.
Alyssa's in conversation around this.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about like residential design, like residential standards, right? And so, um, we want to be cognizant of our existing development. That's what I'm hearing. And so I want to hear from each of you, like, what your thoughts are, so we can kind of explore that and, and find a way to. Put that into.
So my, my opinion on this is based on my own house, where I have a non-conforming structure in my backyard that was built without a permit before I lived there. And it is below my roof line, so even though it is, it is encroaching on the alley, it doesn't feel big. Someone built something that is conforming on the alley eight-foot setback, but it is two stories tall, and so it dominates the space in the back. So that I think we have to do a trade-off of some sort or another. So if you do want to get closer to the rear lot line and you're constrained by space, you have a kind of a height cap scenario. That would be my opinion.
I think that's fantastic.
That's also consistent with what we have in commercial zones that abut residential zones, that it has to be. The height is more limited if it's abutting, uh.
And I forgot, I forgot that we have that, so that kind of aligns with our already pre-existing code.
Yeah. Right now you could put a garage, two-story, I mean, or a shop, an accessory structure can be eight feet in setback.
Just as long as it's not dwelling.
But I think if we're gonna, if people were to apply this, you'd see it happen more, so maybe. This, I mean, that makes sense to me, to, to put some kind of restriction on the height, because then it just feels like that bulk is, is there. So you know, so if, if you're on an alley, obviously you get that eight-foot setback. This would be for those that aren't on an alley could have that eight-foot setback, so there would be a sixteen-foot separation.
Which is a lower percentage of houses and.
Oh. A lot of them have alleys, but for those that don't, this would give them the same benefit that somebody on an alley would.
Okay. Enough from a fairness perspective.
Where the eight feet came from, I just made it consistent with if you were on an alley.
That makes sense.
And if you have an accessory structure regardless of the alley, it can go eight feet. So I was thinking. That just made sense, um. Elizabeth.
I just had a question. The drawing that you have here for the example, is that eight feet?
That is eight feet. I measured, sorry. So I, I took something that was already approved. So everything except the blue was approved.
Got it.
And so I was trying to show, give an example of like, if we allowed an eight, up to eight-foot approachment, this is what three hundred square foot of area. Square footage would look like for lot coverage. So if you're looking at the mass of this, I mean.
And the total lot coverage pencils out to be how much?
Forty percent. That's forty percent with two eighties. This one has.
Yeah.
An ADU inside of it, plus this would be if they added an ADU, we'd allow it. So, but we talked about requiring, allowing the forty percent at the first ADU. The forty-five percent would give us a little bit. I was just trying to give an example of, you know, if we try to stick with the fifteen foot. It's gonna be really challenging to. Encourage that, um. And also, I, I tried to, let me see if I can find this.
I, I think the council will be much more open if we give, like, if there's a, if there's a give take in this.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be worried if we go with two ADUs plus density bonus.
Yeah. Thirty-five feet, sweet.
I think it's gonna be too much for the council.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you have to do the setback.
No, no, no.
That was just something I would.
We should talk about it.
Well, we do the exercise, yeah.
We should talk about it, um.
We, I love the idea. Get closer to the stuff.
And, and because you reduce our, our height.
That makes a lot of sense.
There's really a, there's an issue with, people can't really go up anymore because we reduced height to thirty feet.
Yeah.
So now it's like, we have to do that give and take. We want to encourage additional housing for.
We'd rather see livable spaces too, where people put space between an ADU and a house instead of stacking them up, doing like, this is a, this design. While it's fine, it's actually not like a livable, because it, because it's two-by-four framed interior walls and it's not.
It's not, I mean, this, I tried to show you what it would look like, like, the difference between, these guys have thirty-eight point five percent lot coverage right now, so they already have a deviation. So this brings them up to forty percent here. So forty-five would give them a little more, but still, it would be, they'd have to come out. I mean, I think eight feet, if they, they do the single story.
So are we comfortable? Do we want us to call a single story?
Or, or let's say the twenty-foot height.
A height, height cap?
Yeah. That's a much.
Yeah, it could be a height cap on it.
Because of both the stories.
Yeah, our little side conversation was, I was like, twenty foot, that could still be two stories.
Well, that's why, that's why, that's why I picked, to be honest, was still, it could be two stories. Part of my thought is.
Story and a half, yeah.
Part of my thought is being able to, because a lot of homes.
Lot.
Don't have a garage. A lot of the older homes don't have a garage, and so being able to build a garage with an ADU on top is.
Huge value.
Is very valuable.
Well, if you're putting a garage in the backyard, you already are on an alley, and you already have an eight-foot setback.
On an alley.
Or you could be building a garage with front.
This is only, there's no alley.
Yeah.
This is all like hyper-interior stuff, so you like, you know, everybody that backs up, everybody you don't get.
Yeah.
That's true, that's true.
They go straight in.
If you had a pencil lot or a corner.
Like, the house is on birch.
So.
On the same page as twenty feet.
Good with that.
That's why I could draw.
And it's twenty feet. Following the same definition as the other, like.
Right.
Midpoint of Gable, high point, yeah.
So twenty feet if it's a flat roof or a shed roof to the highest point, if it's a, if it's a gate.
Gable.
And it's, it's twenty feet from the ri- the ridge to the east, the midpoint there.
Hmm.
It could be a little taller, but it's, it's how we define.
Feel as high and as across the board.
Um, I have another example that I pulled up. Sorry, I was trying to find like a thirty, uh, or three thousand square foot lot. This is one I did back in twenty nineteen. Um, the footprint is pretty small. Uh. But it's a two-story. It's only, it's a little under thirty-five hundred square foot lot. The current lot coverage allowed is twelve nineteen, so this is under. Um, if we allowed forty percent lot coverage for the first ADU, it would allow a lot coverage of thirteen ninety-three. I mean, these are still really small houses. I guess if you went two stories, it could be big. Uh, if we have forty-five percent lot coverage, it increases if that. It's only a difference of a little over three hundred square feet. So when you, like, I think when you look at it from percentage, it seems like a big difference, but when you look at square footage, it really isn't.
Maybe we should be packaged as that then.
Well, we, we had some discussion about setting a minimum of, like, starting at and then percentage from there.
Um, and in, in our multifamily zones, the maximum lot coverage is forty percent. So. This would be if we allowed like a five percent increase for each unit, we would be like, in our single, in our, not single family, our low-density zones. We would be allowing more lot coverage than most of our multi-family. Just kind of weird. Uh, we might want to ju- look at multifamily.
So. I was just looking back, for cottage housing, we didn't. Does cottage housing have to comply with the underlying? Lot coverage?
It does.
Hmm. Um. I'm wondering if lot coverage should not be within the ADU section, but if we just.
Overall.
For any residential, for like, wherever we say whatever lot coverage is in each zone, so I guess it would be in the. Standards, dimensional standards, for everything, we say, there's like a five percent bonus for each additional unit. Like, this is, this is the required, this is the lot coverage for a single unit.
Mm-hmm.
And then you get five percent for additional units, up to some, up to three or whatever. And then beyond three, it could be fixed, because it can't be like, well, I'm building an eightplex, so I get seventy-five percent lot coverage.
Yeah.
It's like, well.
So like, probably that maximum forty-five percent, the cap at a forty-five percent.
The multifamily really is interesting to me, though.
Yeah, I.
I don't, I, I'm like, I'm trying to think about Wes Whitman, where I live, and the coverage has to be over forty-five. It's under forty-five.
Forty.
Forty percent.
It's amazing how much space your building setbacks take up.
True. I know, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about the triplexes on the street and other buildings that I'm like.
The setbacks.
I, I, I have documentation to show they needed.
I'm trying to do the calculation.
Well, they probably do, because the setback from the road is twenty-five feet, and you don't think about that, because it's all paved and concreted, so it looks like it's, but it's not, right? And then they have zero eaves and one small walkway that runs across, I mean, so the total, I, it's, I, I can agree with Alison, that's, it's probably not as, as bad as.
Yeah.
Because the setbacks really tuck everything in, so.
And that's where we look at, like, I've talked to other jurisdictions and how they are dealing with this additional densi- additional density and how you look at. Aesthetics and how it impacts the neighborhood. And so they're putting a lot more focus into like the front area area and open space and usable open space, so that it feels more neighborly versus.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, a lot of these additions are going into the back, like, you don't, you won't really see them. Um, so how can we, like, fix the code so that, or, I'll fix the code, but. Address some of those, um, design criteria to like make it the front yard more, so that's what people are, are seeking. Uh, I wanted to give this a good, I thought this was a really good example, sorry, real, just to digress, uh. So, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say one more thing about like the whole setback thing. I just did a quick calculation. On a six thousand square foot, like a sixty by a hundred lot. The required setbacks, twenty-five by five fifteen, is three thousand square feet.
Yeah, so it takes.
I mean, that's fifty percent of the lot is just to your setbacks.
So visually, you don't.
So I feel like you could. Yeah, I mean, having it at forty-five or fifty makes sense, because like, well, you can't really go beyond that, just really, on a really large lot. You potentially could, depending on.
Have a forty-five percent up to three.
Eventual lot.
So even in the multifamily zone, if they were doing three plus units, they did.
I mean, you could.
Forty-five, it's.
I'd be okay saying cap at a fifty.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to. To get more options in the multifamily and try.
And that might be a, a, like, separate conversation with those, our comp plan update, to make it consistent. Um, I agree with that. But like, if we can look at the three units or less, which is kind of what we're looking at here with two eighty U's plus a single family to. I, I, I agree with you. We need to look at overall all our setbacks and.
Are, are we gonna stick to thirty-five though for single families with no ADUs? Ten percent variance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that has to stay concrete in this and not get lost.
I agree.
We'll get people like.
Yeah.
We need to.
Yeah, so it's like.
If you look at the typical house.
Thirty-five with a ten percent.
If you look at the typical house that has a house plus ADU. More recently, we're giving them that deviation because they're, they're building two units. That's their, their hardship. They're trying to accommodate.
We'd rather bump, we'd rather bump that number. That's quite a hundred percent.
So. This is an example of what we've allowed, like, this is typically not there. I'll delete it. This is what is allowed versus like.
Currently at the thirty-eight point five, so technically there'd be another point and a half there that they'd get, right?
It's just a tiny, it's three hundred square feet basically.
But if they're building two eighty U's, they could get as much as a forty-nine and a half percent with a deviation.
Hmm, so we would allow the deviation based on the standard setback. And then this additional, like, you can.
Like, so.
Setback.
If we cap, like, that deviation is for like, if you're building a single family, once you're building up to these units, I mean, I. We could find a way to word it. The, the idea is we don't want to, we don't want, so, we don't want to do a forty-five percent lot coverage for somebody who's building a single house.
Mm-hmm.
This is like an incentive to build additional units for, I mean, for long-term housing.
Yep.
Clarification question. So you wanted to build two eighty U's in the backyard, could you build them like a duplex with a shared wall?
So the way the state law reads is they can be attached, detached, whatever, I mean, it's just a combination of however you want to do it.
Stacked like this.
So it could end up looking like a triplex, even though it's a house and two eighty U's.
I mean, Jason, Jason Lundgren's house looks like a triplex. So I mean, like.
I mean, that's, that's, and then, and then we can get into, I mean, other jurisdictions have done, um, development standards for housing, like, for one to four units. This is what we require, like, maybe they have to have a porch, maybe they have to have these aesthetic things. We haven't gotten into that. I'm just saying other jurisdictions have looked at that with these additional provision.
Do we dictate any aesthetics in our housing?
Right, it's very minimal. I mean, we looked at, when we looked at multifamily, like, we just, the only thing that I think is. Not uncommon is like, we require a certain amount of glazing. If you're on a corner lot and your front door doesn't face this other side, it needs something that was some glazing versus like a flat wall.
And if you'll understand, if you go by that house on like birch or whatever, that you're like, where is the front of this house? It has no front. Um, it's very weird. It's like, you know, the like Motler Mansion house? I think it's like the next one.
Yeah, the next one in from that, I know where.
That we reviewed, I mean, it's only, it, maybe, it only requires, I think, right now, like a fifteen percent glazing, so it's very minimal.
Yeah. That has, there's like.
No windows?
No windows, and you can't figure out where the front door would possibly be.
I don't.
Like, looking from the street, we can talk about, maybe it's like one window, but I mean, it's an older house, you know, but I feel like it's, that's the code.
It's just for the, it's the idea of the blank wall on, on a road, they don't want just a flat wall, so having some kind of, that's the only code that I can think of. Um. That is any different than. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we took out a lot of.
But if you want to look, I mean, the, the pushback we've gotten from density is that people are worried about the feel of the neighborhood. So they worry about height, they worry about how it's gonna look. Um, I know it's hard from, from my perspective, from enforcing the code, it's hard to have a lot of design standards like. The garage can only be fifty percent of the width of the structure. I mean, at, at what? Like, what do we want to dictate and what should be up to the property owner's rights? I understand why.
You can fix people's taste, yeah.
Yeah, I understand wanting to keep the community, like, keep the feel of the neighborhood. I do understand that. Because it is hard when you have a world single-story houses and somebody builds high. We did reduce the heights, so that does help, uh. But are there any other aesthetic things that we might want to consider for one to four houses? Like, but that would be helped to like. We can't require anything for an ADU that we would require for a single family.
I think we kind of let it, gotta let the constituents have the freedom to try some things here, instead of try to dictate what, yeah, I mean, like, if we're gonna open it up, let's let them. If it's gonna be infill housing and they're gonna try to figure out how to add this to what they currently have, I feel like the, the more freedom, the better for. Said person than for us to try to constrict them.
And I like that. I mean, I do like your consideration for if we do reduce setbacks, like, let's limit that height. That makes sense. You don't want it to overpower the neighbor. Um. And then capping that lot coverage. So I know I don't have a ton of examples, but I did want to show you the park. This was just, sorry, just to digress. If I can get this to work.
Well, you pulled it up, Maggie, uh, and opened it up to comments from the community, but.
Yeah.
Yes, for the clarification, I like the twenty foot, that figure about that, but you said that eight foot. It's already eight foot for if you're on an alley, so now does that, are, are they already limited to twenty feet? Or does that?
No.
On an alley, they are not, because typically an alley is sixteen foot, foot, sixteen feet to twenty feet of right of way.
Yeah.
So that adds that additional buffer. So this is for, if you're not in an alley, eight feet, that would mean a sixteen-foot separation for the main neighbor.
I just wanted to make, since I was thinking about ours, and I was like, would we have to?
No, where, where you are, you could go up.
Yeah, that alley just adds that additional separation. And so this allows that, you know, an accessory structure, we build at eight feet. And so this allows that, you know, an accessory structure, we build at eight feet, but then accommodates neighbors a little bit, so.
Now, are they able to research?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a, I mean.
Like to the online people, will I be able to see that they don't talk?
There is anyone online that wants to raise their hand as a community member with some um questions or comments, you're welcome to, this is just a discussion time. Uh, but this example I have here is like a little over three thousand square foot lot. That like minimized kind of their footprint, this is a two-story home though, so you have to realize it's over, you know, it's a fourteen hundred square feet or more. Close to fifteen, so uh. The current coverage on this lot is twenty-four percent, so they they have their, they have some room in the back, like. Sorry, you can see the footprint here, so they do have some room to grow, if we were to allow an increase in lot coverage, um. The thirty-five percent is twelve nineteen, forty-five percent is fifteen sixty-seven, so really the.
The smallest lots are the ones that need it the most, honestly.
Increase in lot coverage, I I think that, I was just trying to show like the increase is really not that much, it's a difference of a little over three hundred square.
But that three hundred square feet would allow, three hundred and forty would allow a seven hundred square foot double-tall ADU to be built, right? Which is a perfect, I mean, I I shouldn't say perfect, but a great little.
Or you could do a garage in the back with just a small little ADU unit above, just a one-bedroom. I mean, it just gives that flexibility, this is a single home, um, with no ADU, so if we do the two ADUs. Uh. They could, I guess, stack them, um, and and just have parking uncovered, but this would be a good example somewhere where they could put a garage with a. Small ADU above, we want that housing variety, um, we don't have a lot of one-bedroom rentals, um.
Is it, is it reasonably within the scope of? This, even though it's a different code section, can we still make the lot coverage change to? The zone rather than making it specific to eighty use?
Yeah.
Yeah, so zoning.
So then it applies to cottage housing, it applies to duplexes, it applies to whatever.
Alright. I wanted to pull up the code that she's talking about, just for anyone online, um. Eighteen dimensional standards, so here's our residential development standard chart, so if you see here, we're we're mostly talking about these. These zoning districts and what the. Lot coverage is, so you see it's thirty-five in RL six, thirty-five in R eight, and forty in MF, so. Here, we have an app, a footnote that says. If adding except for, like, it's per unit, maybe, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that it'd be like a five percent increase.
Per unit.
Per additional unit.
Up to a max forty-five.
To a maximum of.
Fifty.
Fifty.
The maybe.
Yeah, I agree with.
I think that was.
I I want the kicker to be for the, ask that first ADU, so I I can see going from thirty-five to forty-five. But then you jump up to fifty on the third, right, like, really incentivizing that.
Do you say ten percent for each? Or five percent for each?
I think it could be fixed, we could just establish a fix.
Fifty across the board, if you're doing up to two eight.
No, I'm saying, how much does it increase per unit? Like we're saying, does it increase five percent for each unit, so, you know, it's thirty-five for a single family, it's forty. For a duplex or a house in an ADU, or does it go up to forty-five for a duplex or a house ADU?
So I would, I would, I would like it to be from thirty-five to forty for the first ADU.
Yeah.
And then from forty to fifty for the second ADU, so it's instead of a percent increase, it's a fixed.
Oh.
So you have an incentive.
So it goes thirty-five, forty, and then it goes up to fifty for a third unit.
But then nothing.
So if you have a cottage housing in forty units.
So it's standard zoning for the first unit.
Yep.
Oh, wow, if you do two units, it goes up by five percent, you do three or three units, it goes up by ten percent more. And that's the cap.
Except, well, yeah, in multifamily.
And then, and that.
Does that mean it goes to fifty-five in multifamily or like?
Because of the, no, I think we just keep it at.
Fifty-five in multifamily, if we're.
Oh, oh, no, right, if we did it.
It would just be hard.
So it'd be like, one unit is thirty-five, two units forty, more than that, more than two units, three or four, fifty-foot flat rate.
But what's hard is in multifamily, it starts at four.
So you're not getting as much good, Jim.
We could change that.
We can.
That's why I'm saying, right, if we look at all, like, this this whole chat, this whole chapter here is for residential development.
Wanted to discourage that.
So if we do, like, I think the incremental.
Thirty percent.
The ma- the majority of, the majority of our multi-families though, like a forty percent lot coverage, there is a lot of the space. Right now, so I'd rather see fifty come in so that you build more split designs instead of uh vertical stair units. So from a design perspective, I think that might change how people approach designing multifamily, because right now everyone's doing the same shape with the staircase that eats up. Twelve percent of the floor plan-ish.
Yeah, so why don't we even across the board, because it keeps it all even kind of the stair step, so it's like five, you get, if you do. An ADU or it's second, or not even ADU, a second unit. So if you do block, second unit, five percent increase, third unit, you get a ten percent increase.
And multifamily.
And that's the cap.
Yeah. So that means multifamily could go up to fifty bucks.
There are multifamily lots that build single-family homes.
Lots of them.
And in 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 multifamily, that's what we don't want, right? Single-family, yeah, you.
You know, multifamily would go up to a max of fifty-five.
Yeah, that I mean, that.
And then multifamily would be a max.
That's a, that's a density increase and a bonus for the increase, that makes sense, and that allows you to actually build units that are slightly larger. If if, I mean, it'll be nominal if you're spreading that over four units, but still, right?
Yeah, I mean, for, I think for some multifamily lots, that might make the difference of being able to fit four or five units.
We also have.
No, because we still have the cap on how much area, yeah, it's two thousand for you, so actually that.
That's my so.
Why not change the number of units?
If you hold that.
If we're looking at.
Maggie here.
Sorry. If we're looking at dimensional standards in multifamily, we have this little footnote that says. For new land divisions, you need to have six thousand square foot for up to three units. When it talks about existing legal lots of our car, you need to have two thousand square feet for a lot area for each dwelling unit. So you'd have, if you have a six thousand square foot lot, you're capped at three units, which doesn't really make sense for multifamily, so that's something that.
Hmm.
Would be nice to maybe look at. Because it is, so, an example, we have a lot behind City Hall. That is a very difficult lot because of access and the, so, but it it's limited to, I think, a total of seven units because of this. Or, but, you know, if you could get creative, maybe it could. Have more units, but like because it's based on block size versus like what you can fit within a square footage.
So it's fourteen thousand square feet.
And like with cottage housing, it kind of contradicts this, because cottage housing will allow up to however many lots you could fit. While needing your parking, your setbacks, your lot coverage, et cetera. This doesn't have that caveat, it's like a hard two thousand square feet per unit.
That makes sense with the cottage, well, I don't know, maybe I'm not, the cottage housing seems to be like a, kind of a special idea and a special thing where these are hard and fast rules. That exist inside the zoning, you know, so.
For multifamily.
Precisely, I I.
Yeah, and cottage housing is like. How to make. Multifamily housing fit in a single-family zone versus in a multifamily zone, you do not have that constraint, so, yeah.
I'm just looking at like, if you have a six thousand square foot lot in a single family and a six thousand square foot in multifamily, you might be able to act with one single family. And you can in the multifamily based on, that's all.
By using cottage.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Because of the amount of open space required for cottage housing and that they can't be attached.
That is different, you're right.
I don't think you could fit more than three on a six thousand square foot lot. But that's not an argument for keeping that rule about multifamily, I still think.
It's just what we look at.
I'm like, can we? Do we need to have that rule, or can the number of units be dictated by the? What the lot can accommodate à la cottage housing? We just like cross that off.
Can it, I mean, based on, based on setbacks and lot coverage and parking and all the requirements that come with it. That, I mean, just uh, the example that keeps coming up is some of these multifamily lots that we have that are smaller. It could maybe accommodate something, but. Something more that can't because of this.
I'm.
This is a.
I'm curious if we can just eliminate number one, just entirely, and not, we don't even need to replace it with anything, it's just.
Eliminate what?
Dictated.
The minimum square foot per unit rule.
Yeah, because we still have six thousand across board for all of these.
Yeah, you still have, still have your minimum lot size, you still have the, you know, the lot coverage is discussed, the setback is discussed, like. You still have.
I mean, all the setbacks are pretty much the same, only, yeah.
Everything is. Multifamily has parking requirements. For more than four units or whatever.
The only difference between RL six and multifamily is the lot coverage and the height.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
And it's, and it's very minimal.
Very small.
So that's why I'm like, well, then, then you have this extra layer just for multifamily, and it's like, why are we adding more?
Yeah, we don't need more.
This is just something I wanted. Consideration on, and I can look into the why and now that we're kind of laying that single-family zone. Um, is this necessary to me?
No. It's more restrictive than we want, the whole idea is less restriction, more freedom, so this is unnecessarily.
I can look into footnote one.
The.
Yeah, I would go to cut it.
Does that make sense to everyone, or do you need?
Elizabeth, give a thought.
No, I'm looking at like something else, oh. You have more questions from that? No, I was trying, I was looking at the consistency again between the RL six and the the multifamily, but. There are some oddities, but they're like such outliers that are never gonna happen, so I'm not worried about them, they're just weird.
What are your thoughts, though? Share.
Oh, no, no, it's just like the side street large yard for lots less than six thousand square feet, like. Why would?
The street sign?
Yeah, like, street side yard, sorry, not side tree, gosh. Things like that, but like multifamily less than six thousand square feet is weird, just saying, like, it's very.
That was.
Why would it be ten?
Ten, fifteen, ten, yeah.
That R eight was, so I can give a little backstory, so R eight was the new zone we created from the R ten, R twelve. And those R ten, R twelve zones had larger setbacks, and so that was kind of our like accommodation to, we're gonna reduce the. Um, not even lot size, but we're still gonna keep those same setbacks that were required from the underlying, so I mean, to still make it feel a little more. Rural, these are like our UGA areas.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I was looking at RL six to multifamily.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
On on which one?
The five to ten on the street side yard.
Oh, yeah.
But. But that's less than six thousand square feet, like.
How many, yeah, how many lots do we have?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Technically, it's non-conforming, right, so it feels like they're being a little bit more restrictive on it, I don't know, maybe that was the idea?
Yeah, I mean, most.
But it's like you're being more restrictive, like, all you can, like, what can you actually build with like, especially if you go, the the jump from like. You know, six thousand to six thousand ten square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's consistent here, but not for our anyways, but like I said, it's like such an outlier that I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it.
And like, how many lots exist that are, are corner?
Yeah.
Multifamily lot under six thousand square feet?
Yeah, exactly, like, let's not spend time on it.
Uh. Yeah.
I think that it's really easy to go from the current topic straight into like. Why are our minimum lot widths, so why, why is the, you know?
Again, I mean, this, this opens Pandora's box, right?
And so, so I'm like, we don't have to go down that, I would love to.
Keep this focus.
The chair was bringing us back down, come back into the family.
I'm saying about our processes can be things to look at, because if it can, if they can show a billable area. We should really have a minimum width if they meet the lot size, right? So if you have to think, okay, look at what we historically built, we have thirty-foot wide lots that people can build on, so why limit the width? If they meet the minimum lot size and it can be set back and show that there's a billable area, those could be things we talk about.
Let's push that to that discussion.
Yes.
For this discussion, just wanted to make sure, are we all in agreement that we would like the. Uh, the five percent, ten percent increase to apply here versus to. The individual ADU code.
Yes, I agree.
Comes up, okay. Uh, now the next question is the. Uh, variance or the the setback variance based on height, would that stick here as well, or would that fall back into the ADU conversation?
I think that is specific.
To eighty.
To the eighty's, and I don't think it needs to necessarily be specific to a second ADU, I think it should just be like.
Unit.
If you're for an ADU. You can reduce the rear yard setback to eight feet, if it was fifteen, if you have a twenty-foot height limit.
Okay. Everyone agree?
I agree.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'm not gonna edit it right here, I'm taking notes, um. If we, like, just to build off that, were you guys okay with the other changes? Uh, I I'll fix the changes at the end here, because these were just based on conversation, so I'll fix that based on what we talked about. And um, what about the parking, did that make sense?
Just a second, I have a nuance to what Alison was saying, so, is the height limit go from, uh. For the, for the part that might be between the um, eight and fifteen?
Right.
We wanna keep that, so there's like two different zones, like you can still have whatever the height is.
Yeah, I think the reduced height would only apply to that, in that space between fifteen and eight feet.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay, we're on the same page then.
If you're, if you're building ADU and it meets the fifteen, you can go thirty, which is the zoning, if you want to use that encroachment into that fifteen feet.
Just the encroachment part.
You have to be single level or.
Than whatever, twenty feet, yeah.
Eight feet, between the fifteen and eight, I'll I'll find a way to word it, but then it's limited to that, that height.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I know last time we talked a little bit about parking and I wanted to get into that, so here. Um, the code reads each ADU requires an off, one off-street parking space, which is in addition to any off-street parking spaces required for the primary single family. Sorry, that keeps popping up, oh my goodness, um, but then I added. With two ADUs, propose a single family, it should require only one off-street parking space regardless of its square footage. I know that sounds, maybe that's not the right verbiage, but I didn't wanna have to open up title.
Oh, you didn't wanna have to do that, okay, got it.
And title panel is the one that says, if you have a single family and it's fifteen hundred square feet or less, you only need one, if it's over fifteen hundred square feet, you need two spaces. So this, the way this reads is if you have a house with an ADU, you need three if it's over ten hundred square feet. But if you add that, it it's kind of an incentive if you add that, that second ADU, if you have three already, you don't need to provide more. Uh. I was trying to find a way to not open up another title for changes, and that this would incentivize that second AD. Are there any thoughts on that?
I I would agree with that strategy, but open to discussion.
I think it's a nice way to clean up a huge mess that you could create with trying to open twelve and try to jump into that, so. I, yeah, I mean, it kind of seems.
It is.
Circular and wordy, but I hear exactly what you're doing, so.
If you have a better way to word it.
No, I don't at all, Maggie, I'm not saying that at all, I just, I feel when I read it, it's like, what, oh, oh. It's like, oh, if I had two, and then you're not gonna force me to get the fourth one in there, you're gonna give me credit for the, well, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I I I hear it, yeah, it it works.
But again, this is draft, so if you have a better way to word it, I'm trying to find a way to word it that the doc could interpret and understand. That the public could read and go, okay, regardless of size, I only have to do this many. But I don't wanna be, I don't want it to be overly complicated.
I think it works.
Yeah.
Um, and then, let me see. This was the discussion of gross floor area, so I kept it, I talked with the building official about this, um. Oh. About like gross floor area, like how like, so in building code, we go exterior wall to exterior wall. And if this is more like zoning, but lot coverage, that's what we're looking at, is the gross floor area, which is the interior habitable area. Uh, and includes those big habitable basements and attics, um, but I added this exclusion of interior stairs completely.
Thank you.
I think that makes it easier for staff and for the public to go, okay, I'm not gonna even include my stairwell.
Are you measuring? Are you measuring the stairwell from interior finished drywall from? I, I, I only ask this because this is like one of the biggest hot buttons in how you measure a house.
Based on this definition of gross floor area, it is an interior habitable area. So for lot coverage, we're going exterior wall. For, for.
That makes sense.
For this specifically, it is interior habitable. This is based on state law too, so it's a question. The only thing that I changed from state law is we're gonna completely take out an interior staircase. We're not gonna do, okay, well, we're gonna count the bottom floor, but not the top floor, or we're gonna count both floors. We're just gonna say, that's not really your habitable. Like, you're not living in that stairwell, so we're gonna give you that bonus so you can build a little bit of.
Yes.
That's what we talked about, and I talked it over with building official, and this is what we came up with, and I'd like discussion on this.
I'm all for it. I mean, still you count two by two landing as how it appears. And to your point. Bottom, yeah, so I think it's just.
So, does this refer back to the definition of basement and attic?
Yeah.
Because. Because normally basement and attic are like not habitable space, like when. It would be a floor if it was habitable space, so.
Only if it's habitable.
So you cross out habitable.
But then, but then inside it's an interior habitable.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The interior habitable area. Right.
Okay.
So if you have a completely, your basement is not.
I haven't, I was gonna say, does that mean finished? Or does that mean, does that, what if I have the attic area, but it's not finished? That's not habitable.
If it's not heated, if it doesn't meet the code for like floor, ceiling height and heated.
And finishes.
I, I'm finishes, that's what I'm worried about. Like unfinished basement that's heated is not habitable area, according to.
If it's not finished, then it doesn't.
I mean, I'm heating my garage so that my paint.
If on your site, if on your floor plans, you say that's storage, I can't. In two years, if you convert it and I don't know, like, I, I can't like hold you to what you might do with it. I have to look at what you're submitting.
Oh, okay.
So.
And if it doesn't have like a wall coverings that are to code, then it's not habitable.
Okay.
Then you go and.
Finished, oh, then it's not habitable.
And you wanna change it habitable and I go, oh, it doesn't meet our definition of ADU, you're gonna have a problem.
Okay.
So I mean, we would make people aware of that at the building permit, like we're gonna redline it, like this is not habitable space, not accounted.
And it's like, I'm helping somebody convert their garage and they have to get a permit because they're converting space that was not habitable. To space that is habitable. So it has to, they have to like.
Yeah.
Make sure there's drywall. In the garage, they didn't.
If you have a house that's six hundred square feet of storage, I'm not gonna count that as habitable space.
Okay.
That's not gonna count for your ADU.
Gotcha.
And then if you come back two years later and wanna convert that to habitable space, we're gonna have a discussion, figure out how to make that one or not. Based on what the code does. Yeah, okay.
And interior staircases are measured.
I would say.
To, to take them out of the square footage, how are they measured?
I would say, well, if we're gonna count interior habitable area as like those. Interior wall.
You just go interior wall measurements and screw the staircases? Gotcha, okay.
The staircase would be drawn to that dimension to the plan, and you just use that dimension.
Measurements and don't even think about it.
Usually in the floor plan, they show us what the stairway is, and we can measure it and negate it. Uh, it's easier when it's not hand drawn and done by a professional.
Then I just give you the measurements.
Yes, and I go, oh, do it yourself. That's thirty square feet, great.
The computer did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we wanted to like. That was one discussion we had, like what do you include, what do you exclude? So I think it's pretty clear here. It says we include habitable basements and attics. We're not gonna include interior staircases or garage or steps or structures, sorry. I can't talk with these retainers, but accessory structural references. So, uh. Your storage areas, your unheated, unhavitable areas, we're having.
And what about, I mean, I'm getting nuanced here, I know, but what about, uh, the. Measurements themselves for the building? Are we talking about interior measurements only, or are we talking about exterior to exterior?
This would be, I mean, this is based on the state, state law and the state definitions. So. When we're measuring your square footage of your ADU, we're doing interior.
Okay.
We're doing square footage of your footprint and lot coverage, we're gonna do exterior.
Okay.
I think sleepy eating your cookie.
I know, that's confusing, but like.
No, it makes sense because if ADUs split the house or they're attached to the house, then how you measure the ADU, I mean, I get, I totally.
Right now, when they're attached, I just kind of do a dividing line between the center and I'm like, this is this. So it. I mean. Correctly, I mean, I think Allison is a good representative of this, being an architect, like, would that be hard to do, to show? What are your thoughts? Um, I'm just trying to be consistent with the state.
We're looking at, well, that's IBC, it should be the same in IRC.
Uh, that one's different because the, the IRC definition, I don't wanna use because it excludes.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I thought.
It excludes bathrooms and hallways.
Yeah, that's what.
And I'm like, that's not the definition we wanna use.
So it's like.
It's not the IBC.
No, RCW. RCW has its own definition of habitable space.
Yes.
And it's that.
Got it.
Do they also define habitable area?
See.
We'd have to look at that.
Because that's the thing, to me, like attic, like if it's habitable, you don't call it an attic anymore.
Right.
Like an attic is.
And ANSI standards for measurement.
Habitable basement, like, it has to meet.
Like, I mean, yeah.
Has to meet the height, the area, the, I mean, all the definitions, everything would make it habitable.
Yeah.
In the.
Not an attic.
Then not, I mean. Based on RCW, and then I added that excluding just this area and like your storage and your garage. For me, if I was interpreting this, like if I got a permit in, I know like if it's habitable or not. Because it's gonna, if you have a heated attic that meets the, I'm gonna count it as habitable if it meets the head height.
And it's finished.
Heated and it's finished.
Yeah.
If it's not finished and it's stored, I'm not gonna count it.
Right.
If it's basement and it's not heated and it's stored, I'm not counting. If it's on the same floor and it's not heated, it's stored, I'm not counting. Uh.
You just have to think of how your eventual successors might interpret it too.
Yeah.
Because the county. I would, I mean, the county, I am not going to say exactly what I think of their definitions of ADU. On.
So, and that, and that's why I, I think we put discuss this thing with the building official. Um, because we looked at the IRC, we didn't wanna do the IRC definition, because then you have giant ADUs, like if you're including. Bathrooms and hallways and all these other things, people are gonna maximize that, right? They're gonna do a giant.
Your hallways are gonna be six feet wide.
Yeah, and so we wanted to be like, okay, let's stay with the RCW, but let's add this exclusion. I think the stairway makes sense. You're not living in your stair. It shouldn't be calculated interior.
Well, also that gets complicated about like, does it count on this floor or this floor?
And so, because we have that discussion last time, we just said.
I like it, yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you, I can look at definitions and maybe add some more that are consistent with either or, or.
Can we reference someone who makes the definition for us, so we don't even have to think about it?
Yeah.
Find the definition we like and just reference that.
Yeah, like ask Lewis maybe, like, what is the definition that you wanna refer to? And let's just refer to that instead of talking about basements and attics. And then we can just go back and say, you know. Total gross floor area per X excluding interior stairs.
But it says interior habitable area.
Really pause it really quick.
It says.
Uh, gentlemen, you're free to stay. This is really, we have a discussion.
Discussion.
But if you'd like to leave, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should make him suffer. You just saved them another forty-five minutes of.
Are you referring to the, the ADU RCW? Okay. Which doesn't define habitable area, it defines gross floor area, but. Which the, and then says means interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, but actually the Washington State Building Code. Has the same definition as the International Building Code that excludes all of those other things. So I think we just shouldn't use.
We don't wanna use.
The term habitable area.
Yeah, so like define our own habitable area in.
We could say gross floor area minus the stairs.
Cause that's like.
That's defined in the ADU RCW.
And like gross floor area is, I would say widely consistently defined as. Everything inside the exterior walls.
Okay. So if we took this out and just said excluding.
Boom.
Maybe, I would just ask Louis if he want, if there was like a definition that he intended to refer to, if he is the one.
I don't think there was. I think they were like looking at all of them and he's like, we're like, we don't wanna use IRC IBC because that excludes too much.
Yeah.
My ideas, we still have the, they're accessory, right? They're small. We don't want to, if somebody wants to do a two-story, we don't wanna. Make it unreasonable by counting the stairs. The stairs are just a way to get up and down. We don't like count that to the square footage. And I think that's fair.
Yeah.
So if, if we read gross floor area, then I just have to look at our definition of gross floor area in the zone code. Um.
Title.
It's in title twenty-one.
LMC, it says floor area. Means that some of the gross horizontal area of the floor, floors of all buildings measured from exterior faces of exterior walls.
That's why, like, that's different, that.
ANSI, ANSI is taking over. Their, their measurement standards are starting to bleed into all things that are.
We just wanted to, the, and it's a benefit to people. If you're.
And you measure the staircase for both levels. Because you can't use one without the other, they say. And so it's like, you, if, if, and it's like, and it's like, so you give. Double the amount of credit to, some people say no stairs, ANSI says no, each floor gets full stair credit. And it's, and, and this is. And, and ANSI, now it's because it's ANSI, it's like, people don't, you know, it's the way that everyone's in that measure.
I think the reason why I put this language in here was because of state law, because the state law is like, you can't do anything more restrictive than this. We still are measuring every other structure exterior wall to exterior wall. We wanted ADUs to specifically have this language that met state law, but then our code doesn't, it's, it's hard.
Um, I like this cleaner like. Uh, approach, I think if you could take it back. To. Routine and.
Do you want me to specify for ADUs for measuring interior?
Got to, because it, like we said, if they are an attached ADU or you're building it inside your current house, uh.
You can't.
Interior measurements make all the sense.
So, in no case, if we twelve hundred square feet. Do we say like measure?
Interior dimensions.
Yeah.
Interior dimensions and so you start cases.
I already said excluding interior stairs, garage, accessory structure uses.
Yeah.
Of any ADU shown up, is it seen twelve hundred square feet measured?
To the interior side of exterior walls. Rather than the exterior side of exterior walls.
I agree.
It just is like another thing, like reason for people to do this. And we're trying to incentivize, we're trying to allow. The maximum area within the footprint that they have. I know it's like more language, but I wanna like, so once we get a clean copy of what we think. We'll buy, I wanna run scenarios of how we would apply this to a lot and make sure it makes sense before we adopt something. Uh, so how will we use this in real world? Allison, I may be picking a brain. Uh, got through that, um. This is, so I like that, this is like state law. It's basically like, we can convert. An existing legally established structure into an ADU regardless of whether or not it's compounding. So if you have a non-compiling garage and you wanna put an ADU above it, you can now. The current code doesn't allow that. So.
I love it, but I do want to note if we have a defined threshold of. Converting. Like, if you're like, I have this junky old garage.
Yeah.
That cannot support a second story. So I really actually am going to build a ninety-five percent brand new structure on that footprint. Does that count?
We allow you to go up regardless.
Well, what if you have to like put in a whole new first floor to put in a second floor?
We'd have to look at our non-compiling code, but I think the way this says is like, you got a non-compiling structure, you can convert it. And in conversion, we may food upgrades.
Under a remodel permit?
Yeah, you'd have to conform to current code with the remodel, so.
But if you had a non-compiling backpack and you're keeping.
Or I would hope that you would take.
I mean, what if there's like. Not a real foundation.
Well, there's a lot.
You have to like put in a foundation.
We have.
And new walls.
We have foundation permits. I mean, if you're completely demoing it, we want it to get more. With a, or you.
See, that's, there can be some.
That's where.
But what's the, what's the downside?
That's where you ask for an interpretation.
Well, I get, well, the, the downside is, okay, so like I have.
Sorry.
I have, like, I, I have a real scenario that we can discuss. I, somebody has. A, uh, concrete block garage in their backyard. It's about. Two to three feet off the side property line and. I think about eight feet off the alley. I think it conforms that way, but it's too far into the side. It might be like seven feet off the alley or something. Um. And I talked to this person about tearing it down, building something new closer to their house that squishes it up. Because then it gets really close to the house. But the structure that's there, it's like there's big cracks running like the full height of the wall. It's like. There's no, there's no reuse of this structure. I think it's just like concrete block down to like indeterminate possible footing, so I'm like. Can they just build their new thing in that exact? Footprint, because like you can't really save the actual structure, but there is something there.
Yeah.
And so that, um.
Isn't there language now?
Like, does that count as?
What defines a, a tear down versus.
That's. That's what I'm wondering. It's like, when I say conversion.
In their language, but like one wall or.
I think conversion includes remodel, but if you're re, re-rebuilding, I would think it would be to me.
Okay.
Today's standard.
Right. But if they could keep even just like.
The foundation.
The foundation.
Foundation, like, it's still that footprint, like, I mean, maybe that's, again.
Some of the rocks in place.
Something we do is look at our non-compiling.
Or fresh concrete right around them.
The idea is we don't want to prohibit people from like using existing structures to accommodate housing.
Okay.
And right now, the way our code reads is like, if you're, if your structure is within twenty percent of meeting the setback, then you can convert it. And it's like, we have so many structures that like are still quality to convert or go up.
Yeah.
Um, so we. We wanna. Allow that, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not that concerned about the consequences necessarily. I'm just like. I feel like that's something that people are gonna want to push it. So there should be a definition.
Okay. So, of like.
What constitutes conversion versus.
One or two.
Replacement.
Okay.
There's, there's language out there about keeping one existing exterior wall.
I mean, I.
It was a King County thing.
Yeah, I love like, like replacement, even the footprint, like if you're not changing the foot, like even if it had a foundation and you're just. I don't know.
Yeah.
And I have to talk to the legal official too, but I feel like that's the impact is the foundation from here up.
Yeah.
So if you're not changing that at all. Um, maybe that's, and, and I'll look through it on performing code, that needs to be updated too. That's another storage.
So like the classic waterfront encroachment footprint allowance, right?
Yeah.
If you're on a piece of waterfront property and the old house that was there encroached on the setbacks, but you build within that exact footprint. You can build the brand new with all new everything, as long as you don't.
Impact.
It, it impact any different than the old footprint was. It kinda sounds like exactly that. So why not let them do that, I guess?
Maybe we say, maybe.
I mean, that's a great.
We have, we don't have it fully defined in the code, at least I can easily find it.
Yeah, the way they define it in that, in like the shoreline master program or, I don't remember, maybe it's in shoreline county code, they say. it, you can you can do whatever you want within the, within a non-conforming footprint, you just cannot increase the non-conformity.
So maybe.
So that would allow you to build out into your conforming areas, keeping the two like in your situation, keeping the two walls that are on the alley and the non-conforming wall with the neighbor side the same. Is that right? So you could build into the conforming area.
But even where, you know, where you get to the end of like the existing structure, if you wanted to make it longer, you would have to like step back so that you didn't.
And I'm looking about that, like if it's like really close to a side setback and like maybe you don't go up until you you know what I mean? Like what if it was a single-story garage and they wanna do a two-story?
Yeah.
That is a bigger impact to that neighbor not setback.
Yeah, if you went up, but I mean, that's what we're allowing with the whole thing. I mean, if you had, even if, yeah.
Conversion.
Yeah, but I mean, conversion, you, we're still saying that that would include adding a second floor.
Let's look at.
Correct.
That's converting an existing wall. So let's look at our non-conforming code real quick. Sorry, no, that's not what I want, guys. Non-conforming than eighteen, I think. I, and I can look into this more, like how we can clearly define this, but my only concern is like, you, let's say you have a garage, it's just a single car garage off an alley. And it's two feet off the property line. Now you're gonna go and that's kind of impacting me, but now you're gonna go up the story. That's like an addition versus a uh, conversion.
Yeah.
Like if you have that single story, you're just converting that garage case into a building, so that's not an impact. But once you start maybe a taller, that is a bigger impact. Just like our backyard, so I don't know, I'm just, I'm being dealt, I, I'm thinking of every possible scenario.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but we do allow going up. I wanna be clear. However, you guys want it, I will write it.
I like the idea about any does not increase non-conformity.
That makes sense.
I agree.
So would the height increase or not?
I think so.
You're already non-conforming, so when you add height in that.
Well, we talked about doing within what we just talked about, a, a step up. We'll do, it'll be the same mindset there, right?
But if you have a non-conforming structure that's like right at the property line.
Oh man, that would be to, and then you build that up to twenty feet or.
It's written in the code, guys. Expansions of structures that are non-conforming with respect to required yard level. Well, nothing in this section will prohibit vertical expansion in the side or rear yards up to the height allowed and the applicable zoning district provided all other requirements staring at them. So you're met. Nothing will prohibit vertical expansion in the front yard.
Yeah, only in the.
Up to the height allowed. But that's after it already says will prohibit vertical expansion in the side or rear yards to the height allowed.
So it'll just be non-conforming code.
Yeah. So basically before, so before adding this into the ADU code, these the non-con, non-conforming structure, like basically it's just, it's just saying that you can turn a structure that is not a dwelling into a dwelling and it can carry on as a non-conforming use.
But then our non-conforming code also talks about rebuild though, and talks about once a, one structure is damaged or whatever beyond a certain percent, it needs to be setback. So
Yeah.
We have kind of an inconsistency if we're gonna allow a rebuild in the footprint. Non-conforming wouldn't.
Right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Seventy-five percent of it.
Isn't a good idea.
Normally, if you change the use of a structure, then you lose your like non-conforming status. That's how code normally works. We're just saying like, hey, you can convert an ADU and not lose your non-conforming status for this particular structure.
Yeah, we say that in B. We say convert, but the rebuild is where in. Like, cause our non-conforming code says, if a non-conforming use of building or structure is damaged, demolished, removed or destroyed by any means and the reconstruction cost exceeds seventy-five per- percent of its value, it's no longer non-conforming, you have to meet standard.
Like that.
But that's how our code is written now.
Reconstruction costs to the current thing or the additional.
It's to the current structure. So like if you demolish a garage, we go like, we look at the assessors value of just the garage, not including land. And say if you're building something that exceeds that, more than seventy-five percent of that, you have to meet today's standard for setback. So it's almost everything.
I kinda like that. I mean, it just feels, it feels like the only way this might be used if, if somebody had an old grandfather building that is way in the setbacks and they come in and they're like, oh, well, I can, you know, meet this and that. And then they just, you know, they're already way too tight to set property line and then they go up crazy. That's feels kinda unfair to the property owner that already had something in the setbacks that they're not allowed to be in, I don't know.
So this is more for, I mean, I, I think the code, the, the code that's drafted for ADUs is more for conversion. Like you have a garage in your backyard, you wanna convert it to a wall. Conversion versus like rebuild. And we're already reducing setbacks and lot coverage for these structures too. I don't know.
I don't know, if the structure already existed for is already in existence, I would think if I was a neighbor, I would prefer that that be rebuilt as a nice place that somebody's actually living in as opposed to
With the same height.
A scary rodent situation.
I don't disagree with that with the same height of the building that was there.
But I mean, even if it, even if it was the same height, I would think that it would exceed if it was a scary rodent shack. Then it probably would exceed. Yeah, so I feel like.
Especially if it's assessed value, they don't, they don't.
Going up and not demolishing. I'm just saying, we demo it, it has to meet code. This is why, cause even if you were.
But if we did, so if you had a building there and you, that was non-conforming and then you demo it, you wouldn't be allowed to replace that building with a non-conforming ADU in that exact.
Right, with any structure, like it's, it's a seventy-five percent value.
I mean.
That's how the code is written now.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to reexamine that because that seems like anybody would prefer to have a, a conversion of a scary rodent building to a actual housing unit. But I don't know how many of these exist, so maybe we don't need to spend time on it.
So, thank you, so we, we, so right now.
I have a scary rodent.
I just want to finish the conversation, cause like, then example, this is right now, we allow accessory structure. Like if you had a garage shop, you could build it eight uh, at eight feet setback, right? Currently, even if it's not on a finale, you allow non-havable accessory structures to be at eight feet. So right now, if somebody wanted to convert that shop garage into an ADU, they couldn't because our code doesn't allow it. This is saying now, if you have a non-conforming structure.
Wait, why couldn't they convert it now?
Because right now it's a fifteen foot setback.
We'd have to be conforming.
But accessory struck, non-havable structures would be at eight feet right now, in the code.
That's one of the things we wanna change though, right? So.
Well, that's one of the things we're talking about, moving to eight feet, but these are things to think about, I mean.
Yeah.
I think about these small little structures that are like on the property line or on the alley that you know, now they're in, I would say they're, they even, the code allows you to increase, but if you're demolishing completely, it says you have to meet setback. So I'd say if you have a single-story structure and you wanna convert it, fine. If you're going up and you're keeping it, fine, but if you're totally tearing down, we don't want those non-conform, I mean, the idea is you don't want non-conformities.
Yeah.
If you're tearing it down. Like, we, we don't want, like, if it's two feet off the alley, you have.
I mean, I guess.
We're trying to remove.
I guess my question would be like, if we're talking about like incentives to the property owner, the property owner has no incentive to do anything about their scary shack in the backyard if it's not providing any income to them or providing any housing, but if there is an opportunity to convert it to housing.
We're saying they can, they just couldn't like increase.
No, but we're saying that we, they couldn't if it was non-conforming. If, if it was like a junky old garage that needed to be torn down.
Over seventy-five percent of the assessed value.
Yeah.
Then we would say you need to then go into the conforming space.
Which anything, if you're gonna like bring it up to like livable, habitable space, probably most of these garages that you would consider converting, they would be more than a seventy-five percent.
Oh yes.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
So, so what I'm hearing from the majority, cause we're having a discussion, is if we have, sorry, this code language. And maybe include like maybe converted or rebuilt. And what, what would, or cause converted is very different from tearing down rebuilt. But converted is just a change of use.
Yeah.
The, the state law says converted. So you're kinda must allow accessory dwelling units to be converted from existing structures, including when allocated to detached garages, even if they violate current code requirements for setbacks or lot coverage.
So there's a saying, if you have a garage, it's a new occupancy, you can change it to an R three, you can. Even if it is on the property line.
You can't.
It doesn't talk about tear down, rebuild or addition. It's saying.
Converted.
Converted. If you want to expand that, we can. I just wanna make sure it's very clear that it's for long-term ADUs like the, that it's for housing.
So conversion would.
Yeah, exactly.
Conversion wouldn't imply damage, demolish or destroy.
Yeah, I, I'm right there. That's all I'm thinking here. The, the term conversion to me, if you say it to me as it's, yeah, it sounds like, oh, we're gonna take this building that's be, and we're gonna do a little something and it's gonna change the use to this building. It's not like we're gonna take this building and raise it and build something fresh.
We know that people will attempt to abuse it, so that's why we have to.
That's why I'm interested in like, wh- what specifically.
Yeah, that's like. But would we be, uh if we, if you have a scary rodent building, it would be much more efficient to
Demolish it.
demolish it and rebuild it with the same, if you, but if you rebuild it with the same envelope, the impact would be positive, I would think.
I don't disagree with you. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I wanna define conversion and rebuild and like, I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure that what we're talking about here is that a conversion factor, not a rebuild. I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm just talking about the, the idea of conversion is not a incentive to rebuild the scary rodent structure. It's to convert the, an existing building into a different use. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
And so then the rebuild, the damage, demolish, destroy scenario is what we're talking about when someone starts to do that and they have the scary red house. That's where there, there would be non-conforming, right? So if they're in a non-conforming state, do we, would we now introduce the within the envelope question? And I think that I don't think anyone here would say like, that's a horrible idea, but I don't think anyone would find that there'd be a cost benefit to it. So it'd actually be an unused provision. Like, you're not gonna rebuild, you're not gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars to build a ten by ten thing in your backyard, like just.
There's some pretty big, like junky, junky garages out there.
My neighbor has an island one in his, his yard, so like, sure. But it's also, it's so non-conforming, it hurts, right? But like, he will never, he's gonna tear it down and build something much larger. So in this case, I'm just, I'm trying to think of use cases where the people this week could exercise.
Yeah.
And I think that the conversion provision is more important to make sure we state that clearly. And then demolition destruction doesn't play as big of a, for, for that limited subset of properties. We want them to then push into conforming and pull them off a lot.
Yeah, we want to pull them away from the population, away from our right of way if they're not performing. That's all again, not, is eventually those non-conformities go away. But we want to allow for like, right now, if you have a structure that is in good shape and could be used for housing, rather than having people like illegally house people with these structures, we want people to convert that.
Like my shop cannot be converted. It's a coal barn with a slab and
Yeah.
when, when I look at it, like, there's no way I could convert it, so I have to demolish if I need, if I wanna rebuild.
And I would, I don't have a problem with the envelope idea in, in a rebuild process like that, as long as if you, as long we've had that discussion, as long as you're not increasing uh, any non-conformity. So like, I mean, and I feel like if we tie height into that, then it kinda takes care of everything that I think of. So that's the thing we're.
I don't know, I still, yeah, it's like, do we, do we want to codify the like if you're only two feet off your side property line instead of five, you can tear down your junky garage and build this like lovely two-story ADU that's only two feet off your property line.
According to state law, we, we can't limit that though.
For a converge, this is the conversion. That's why I, that's why I was the, like, like, make sure that we're talking, cause it appears to me that the state is saying the conversion, not the rebuild. So I feel like we have the control over the rebuild idea where the state has forced us into the conversion, no matter what happens.
But.
Which like, if it's, if it's a structure that's feasible to convert, then awesome, do whatever you want, but yeah, it's. In your example, are you discussing, um, the, the increase in height from one to two stories of a two-story situation being a few feet off of that, cause that would be increasing the building envelope. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like getting into the height is like just so far in the weeds and so complex to write sensible code to define all of that.
Yeah.
So like, how can this?
Um, before you guys do that, we're spending a lot of time.
Yeah.
So long as this will.
Yeah.
I'd really like to wrap this up and get to the, uh, UGA swap. So, can we table this for now?
Absolutely.
Yep, table non-conforming.
Thank you, Drew.
Eventually waiting for an hour and a half. They have, they per, they prepared the memo that was in your packet. Uh, Emily, I know we didn't have a lot of chance to discuss. Do you wanna kind of explain the process and do you wanna share a screen or do you want me to share a screen?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, I can share my screen. Uh, if I can figure it out, okay. All right, do you see my screen now?
We see a screen with.
Jogging.
Desmond, I don't think.
Yeah. I tried to get.
Can you try to share again?
Yeah.
Now, guys, coming.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Um, greetings, members of the planning commission and staff um, and any members of the public. I am Emily Weimer from AHBL Planning Consultants. Um, I'm here in our Tri-Cities Pasco office. Okay, I'll just go with some basic background information about the purpose of tonight. So planning for urban growth areas, also known as UGAs, is one of the foundational tools of the Growth Management Act for directing resources to urban growth. Um, deciding where future urban growth should be located and encouraged and to what extent. So UGAs by design are areas where growth is expected and higher densities are planned for. So this contributes to conservation of critical areas, farms, forests, natural areas. Um, there's a lot of reasons why you plan for UGAs. So the main function of UGAs are to provide what the RCW calls urban governmental services. Um, so what, what does that mean? Urban governmental services are defined in the RCW to specifically include storm and sanitary sewer systems, domestic water systems, uh, street cleaning, fire, police, transit and other public utilities associated with urban areas and not normally associated with ru- rural areas. So some of these you might think, oh, are, are those provided in rural areas? Well, yes, some of them are provided in rural areas. Um, but typically at a much lower capacity. And then finally, storm and sewer are the only two that are generally exclusively just for urban growth areas. And on the map, you can see the current Leavenworth city limits in gray and the current UGA in yellow. And hopefully those show, colors show up okay. They're not super bright.
You move the people. Hold on, let me grab it.
Yeah, there you go.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, you can see it.
Yay, okay, um. So for the unincorporated areas that are in the UGA, the city's comprehensive plan does address those areas and that's adopted by the county. So the county and the cities should work together to adopt those, um, regulations and land use developments. Even though, um, the UGA areas that are unincorporated are not part of the city, the city still Has a role in their future development. Okay, continuing on with the background, um, the city is reviewing potential options for the UGA swap. I think you're all well aware, it was docketed during the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan amendment cycle. Um, and then recently, the state legislator adopted provisions for what is called a net zero swap. Which provides this unique opportunity to counties that wasn't available before. And so this net zero swap is. Um, the background of this project, what we're using, um. The new legislation includes eight criteria that allow counties to revise its urban growth areas during its periodic review. As you may know, Shalane County is also in the depths of its periodic updates. Now is the time to think about that. Okay, so we have come up with three options. Um, for your review and the city council's review for potential UGA swaps. In this map, you can see that they do contain some overlapping areas. They're just, um, different extents. So all three options include portions of the northwest portion of the city. And, and I can, I will review all three of those individually because they are hard to see. So, option one is a swap involving approximately hundred thirty acres. And it's comprised of those two removal areas in red on the map. And the one additional area on the north in green on the map. So the removal area is sixty acres, and so that's a net loss of approximately seven point three acres. Uh, so with this new legislation, you can. Lose some acres, but you cannot gain any acres. So it was, it was tough to balance out, so we wanted to get as close to zero as possible. Um, without going under. So the eighteen parcels that comprise the addition area contain, um, several existing homes. Orchards, um, a city-owned water reservoir. Um. And then the addition area is suitable for redevelopment, especially the acreage that's currently farmed. Um, a portion of the city's water reservoir is used. On that site. This layout, we think, is much more suitable for higher density, um, just given the development patterns. There's more potential for, um. An infill development, redevelopment in that area. Given the lot layout and the potential access to road and future utilities. And then the removal areas, um, are great options for removal because. Um, one of them has designated forest lands, which is a tax incentive. And a pretty good idea that it won't ever develop in the, in the near future. Then additionally, three of the parcels in that north. Removal area are already partially outside the UGA, so. The UGA goes through portions of through those parcels, so we thought at best just to take them out completely. And then the southern removal area, um. Is included as a removal area, given the geography. Uh, it appears infeasible to ever bring city utilities down there, given its geography. And its location on the river. It's already built out in low-density housing, so they're not urban, urban growth. Um. Hasn't been built out in urban growth patterns. So in summary, this swap option adds in those larger lots that are ripe for redevelopment or development. It provides greater protection of the designated forest lands. And then finally, it does remove some lands encumbered, encumbered by critical areas. There's a wetland on the south removal area. And of course, areas that are subject to shoreline management that have additional regulations on development. Or accom- uh, um, encumbrances on future development. Okay, option two is a larger in scale, so it does include everything in option one. Um, but it adds additional area. So this swap adds approximately three hundred seventy-eight acres. Or it swaps three hundred seventy-eight acres. There's a net loss of approximately seventy-two acres. Um, and, oops. Um, this area does appear to be suitable for redevelopment and a logical extension of city services, so that north area is the same, but we added. Uh. A second addition area to the north, northeast of the ci- um, current city boundaries. This seemed like a logical extension of city services. And then the removal area on the west side is, um. Predominantly forest lands, um, erosion hazard areas. There's a pretty big wetland. And there's low density, not great, uh, road access, so things that. Indicate that this area might not be suitable for development. So while this swap does result in a much larger net loss than the other two scenarios. Um, we found that the conditions warranted this unbalance just due to the geography of the area. The development pa- patterns and a few other factors. Okay, then we have option three, which is the smallest. We scaled back both of those options to a very bare-bones swap. It involves approximately twenty-seven acres. And it would result in a net loss of only seven acres. Um, so this one is. We scaled it back based on, um, mapped erosion hazard areas. We wanted to keep all critical areas out of this, so we. Um. Just included a few orchards and the city-owned property, and we're removing the areas that. Um, are partially. With, um, partially already outside the UGA and have that designated forest land section. So as the smallest area, it would have the least impact on future development, so it is not one of the preferred options, but we're providing it. Um, as a reference. So there's a few factors I'd like to point out that, um, are good factors for consideration. Uh, the Shalane County countywide planning policies, um, relate directly to this proposal. And at this time, um, Shalane County has not released its draft countywide planning policies for their twenty twenty-six comprehensive plan yet. Um, I'm less baggy, you have received them yet. Okay, still no. Um, so we did look at the current comprehensive plan, I think it's twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. And we did outline some of those countywide planning policies in the memo that we think would support this action. Secondly, your housing action plan is a great resource, so it's an essential part of the HAP was the housing needs assessment. And, um, Leavenworth had that completed, I think, in twenty twenty-one. Um, but the outcomes of that support this, um. This approach to Leavenworth needing different pockets of land for redevelopment to get at those. To address the housing challenges that the assessment identified. And then finally, there is criteria for this net. Uh, for this UGA swap. There's eight criteria in that RCW. And in our memo, we have reviewed all eight criteria and created responses for all three of the scenarios. So what's next? Um, planning commission should discuss this and give us a recommendation. Um, to forward on to the city council. The city council will make a decision, adopt, um, one of the scenarios or, um. They can do whatever they want. Um, if they do approve, uh, provision for UGA swap, that's not the end of it. Then it's an application to the county, because the final decision on this, uh, UGA revision would have to be made by the county. And I can go back to any of the maps, um, for discussion, or I can stop sharing my screen, so I'm here for whatever the commission needs.
Uh, sure, Simon has a question.
Has there been a, uh, assessment on the. Tax implications of this? Because I noticed in like number two, you're, uh, we're swapping out quite a few. Which would be, you know, high-dollar tax parcels, because they're riverfront parcels, and so I was just wondering, like, has there been a future tax implication? Of what revenue might be gained or lost by giving away high-value parcels like that, or swapping, I should say, the high-value parcels? Well, we would in the future if the, if we annexed these into the, I'm just, I'm all thinking future, so I'm thinking if we did annex them in the future.
In this, in map two, in option two, the northwest area, which is everything off of Ski Hill. Is sixty million in assessed value, and the southwest area is thirty million. And that's a utilities problem, so the south, the southeast area that keeps coming up, that's a utilities problem.
Yep.
Like. Uh, I don't like any of the plans personally. I think they're, they're not well drawn or, or logical based on the actual realities on the ground here. They may make sense from a math and a zoning perspective, but not from the actual people that own the properties and, and what will be redeveloped and what won't. So the, 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 why are, I have one question really, and that's why are we excluding the neighborhood on Titus? Why is that not coming to the mix?
The northeast.
That northeast.
Or everything, or everything in the entire Ski Hill.
Yeah, so really, really for, for our town, Emily, like, the, the Ski Hill basin is town. It's just not in our city limits.
Yeah.
Everything, like, everything south of the river, Drew lives south of the river. Sort of, yeah. The, the reality for, for kind of the way town is laid out is like, expansion up the Chumstick, um, doesn't make a ton of sense.
Yeah.
So the, that's a reindeer farm and that, that's a person who will never sell their land, period, end of story. Um, so those two things, while they may make sense from a plot size. The, the real, the real, like, option two is off the table for me, like, no questions asked. Option three is the only one in this whole list that I'm kinda like, maybe.
It's, it's better than it is now.
It's better than it is now. The, the plots you've laid out there, the pear orchard and the, um, single family home that's in the, in that kind of stick on the option three, though. Uh, they just did a two million dollar renovation on a house. I doubt they're going to sell that anytime soon, so.
Part, part of the drag here was the city wanted to expand the UGA to our water.
So that's, that's an interesting one, so like, I, I think like, the UGA swap, if anything, should dis- discard the south. East option and pick up the city's plot, so like, you need to combine those two would make more sense to me. There is scattered water there, I have city water, and I'm in so.
It, it's just sewer will not be.
Sewer will not be there, yeah.
Next.
Wish to slap in the face, because we actually stare at the waste keeper.
I've talked to a couple of works that like. It, it's like, there will not be sewer there in twenty plus years. So we were trying to look at, so if you look at the properties to the, and Emily, I'm not here to sell what you're told, but I'm just trying to explain kind of what we asked of you. Um, properties to the west, uh, off of Spring Ranger, those all dead end, there's no connectivity to our system. So we're looking at Titus loops. And like, there is some sewer off of. Some of these, I mean, west city, there's some scattered areas that have city services that are in the UGA now, and how they could connect if we were able to do.
If the cross comes off the mountain, we'll take him out of the UGA.
Um, and I think that area, I think the area that's, uh, if you look at the green area here. East toward Titan, that, I mean, it was all a, a bunch of private roads, private development, so like, trying to get a city. Standard road in there would be hard, and we're looking at, um, if we were looking at city services. Expanding the UGA allows us to expand city services, uh, versus or annexation in the future.
So wouldn't we focus on the Titus loop, like?
Yeah.
I mean, that seems to be, for me, like, the, the density is there too, the lot density is there to actually maybe. That's all, that's all those people would love to get off of septic.
So, right, and we're also, like, part of this swap idea is looking for land that is available for redevelopment or development.
We would convert these to RL six, right, if they came into the.
I mean, no, there's, I mean, there's, they would be the RA.
But if they come out of the UGA, so UGA implies eventual annexation, that's a potential, so if we, they would go into R eight. Which R eight at that point in time, we would then kind of, we could actually push a density change. The low, low.
All, all that, all that like. Grayish color in there is our, oh, our eight, right?
Right, but they're eight thousand low, which means you have a, you have a very clear zoning standard about how much you can put on the lot.
Right, and these would mimic what's already in the UGA, which is the R eight. Uh.
County R, R eight is different than ours, though.
It shouldn't be, the, the goal is that the county's gonna adopt our code in full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we have discussions with the county right now that, like, in June, they'll just adopt our code. Completely, so it won't be this arch, with all the cities, that's not us. Um, we just had a conversation this week about how to make that happen. Uh, because we have a lot of old codes mixed in, and it would just make more sense to adopt each city's code.
Yeah.
Um.
Grabbing more of the Titus loop in, in my mind makes sense, and it's, even if it does come down to excluding the, in the option two, the large western swap, like. Some of it doesn't make sense to bounce out, but some of it certainly does, yeah.
I would say on that one.
That's aggressive.
Including so much of Spring Street does not make sense, just like the very western end of Spring Street, but then everything south of Ranger. Is wetland, and like.
Yeah.
Effectively, yeah, undevelopable, so, like, including everything south of Ranger and the very. And the very westernmost Spring Street lots.
The Chumstick addition does not make sense to me, that's what one layer I'm like.
I think the, the thing we were talking about with Chumstick, with even like, in option one, the P blocks, is that. If they're in the UGA, they have the ability to potentially connect to city services versus if they're outside the UGA, they cannot. And the impact, it's, we have services up the Chumstick that are serving some of those multifamily developments. So it's less of an impact than doing wells and septic in some of these areas that are on a shoreline. Then, like, right now, we could not provide services if they're not in UGA. So we're kind of looking at the, the side of the developments too, like, are they more, are they more urban, or are they more?
I mean, for me, the west of Chumstick makes sense, but east of Chumstick does not.
And that's why, if you go back to option one, it included just a few parcels. Or it, I guess, we, we talked, option one in the packet is different.
Yeah, I was. One in the packet is basically just the reindeer farm and the PUD. Or the, like, transfer.
It adds a little bit, so it's.
Is, is there an advantage to the city to picking up the PUD parcel in the UGA?
I mean, it's expanding what's, like, our existing UGA boundary. I mean, I don't know.
Right, what's the, is, is there a structural advantage?
To, like, we have it there to grow up if, if we expand, but reindeer farm, if they wanted to connect to city services.
I don't think.
Then it would have the opportunity to connect.
Yeah.
And they could annex, like, so some of these folks would like to annex, they don't even have the opportunity to annex if they're not here.
Okay.
You cannot annex if you're not in UGA. I have a clarification question, um.
You should annex before you.
That I emailed Maggie beforehand, um. So, the, well, the. In the memo, there are some like requirements of like what you can, like, do a UGA swap for, what you're allowed to do. I clicked on the RCW and read the, the text, which seems slightly different, um. And it might have an impact, one of them might have an impact on how we're discussing this, so. In the memo, it discussed that there can't be a net increase, um, of. Land, but in the RCW, it says, would not result in an increase of total acreage or development capacity. And for a lot of these, the stuff that we're taking out, we might be taking out because there isn't development capacity, like in the case of wetlands or other things, and so. I'm just trying to figure out if we're within the bounds of.
Like, if you're giving up, if you're giving up something that does not have.
Yeah.
But then, I guess, also, can you say like, well, I mean, on paper, like.
We developed.
The RCW says both of them, so it can be an either-or situation, or.
I don't, yeah.
Is it either?
Is it, is, is it exclusive?
It says will not.
Increase in total acreage or development capacity.
Or.
Or.
Development capacity. But for some of these.
If you're acreage to the development capacity, isn't that?
Some of these that are in the UGA now.
Really?
Some of their requirements to develop or they have to access. That could be Red Street.
Either way.
Actually.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I was going off of the commerce guidance, since this is new legislation and we, we're not sure if it's, um, been tried yet. Um, so the stuff in the memos, the.
The commerce.
Commerce guidance.
As opposed to the actual RCW text, which has ten points, as opposed to the commerce guidance, I think had eight. For the requirements, so. I just wanna make sure that the, the scenarios that we're discussing are actually legal before we spend a lot of time.
I mean, I think Ranger to Evan, like, uh, maybe some of this needs to be revisited on the options. I don't know.
Yeah, and this is just like a big picture, I sent this to the county and they could completely say. Yeah, and this is just like a big picture. I sent this to the county and they could completely say absolutely not. That could be benefited.
Sure.
And we're not going to have this discussion again.
Do we know if the county is on board with any of this?
No.
Okay.
Oh, well.
But, and they're having a, an executive discussion next week.
Would the reindeer farm be like, uh, I mean, I guess the rein, the reindeer farm and the PUD. This one maybe is the least impactful now, now that I kind of have a little bit more of a grasp on some of the cities recently not like dead-end streets being one of the things you want to kind of avoid. You want to loop sewer where you can. So you're not just having to build redundant systems down a one-way street. Or a single direction.
We do have right-of-way up, like, I don't control here, but like, yeah, it's tiny sliver of right-of-way that come up this way too.
Yeah.
So we would be able to put utilities in there too versus some of the other areas. So we looked at a lot of different things.
Okay.
Does that actually move up all the way to?
The cool, I mean, the amount of.
I didn't think the right-of-way continued all the way up there because they don't let people.
They do have a, a six-hundred, uh, sort of right-of-way. So I mean, it could. It just goes, it doesn't have connectivity. That's the thing we're looking at is connectivity and utilities.
Yeah, I thought there was one barrier to be able to.
Anyway, it, it's. I appreciate Emily being here because she can explain a lot more and a lot in, in more detail than I can. Um, we did put a lot of thought into this because originally, this has been a three-year process. It was in twenty twenty-two. Where we talked about the UGA expansion. And then we looked at our, um, growth targets and Emily correctly turned on. Um, and looking at what we have to provide for future growth in the next twenty years, we already technically have the land available. But is the land really available for what we need to do and what we would like to do with all these new housing, um, standards we put in place for, uh, cottage housing and things like that. A lot of what we have now is smaller lots that don't accommodate those kind of things that we want to see or future like larger developments. So, um, what we ask them to do is look at land that's outside the UGA that we could swap that might be able to accommodate some of these housing options that we want to see. That, the request for the Chumstick is just, you, you know, there's more, like with reindeer farm there and things like that, there's more of a commercial type development that is more of an urban standard than a rural standard. And being able, if we were to wrap them into the UGA, they have the ability to connect to city services. If they are not in the UGA, they cannot connect to city service. For sewer specifically and even water. I know, uh, there was a press from the reindeer farm when they were looking to expand and they were not granted. To city water and because they were outside that boundary. Um, again, these are options. The county has a final say regardless, even if we, if they say, well, maybe we'll do this. We can look at it, but they have the ultimate decision, not us. So we're kind of at the mercy of the county. Um, I was bringing this to you because this is kind of the first step. Emily, we just, we got this memo. They did a great job. And there's a lot of work and thought put into this. So I want to commend them for that because um, this process has dragged out for three years. So we're just really looking at options because we cannot stand our UGA. Do the swap if they do any. So, um, I won't talk anymore. Sorry. I just wanted to kind of explain the back.
Is there one more tuning point then? I mean, I think there's a tuning point of this too, where it's like that south of Ranger. South of Ranger plus the erosion zone that's currently in the north, the exclusion that's on the screen right now. Possibly those could be dropped.
So like kind of a hybrid of one and two?
Uh, yeah, I think there's some hype, uh, there's some hype, some splits. Get rid of the floods and the erosions. Like, yeah, we don't want that. Like, no thanks.
Well, and those are more rural, right? Like, they're not, they're not viable.
And the ownership problems in those spaces too. We also know that, like, those will not be developed based on the people that tend, that own the property.
And I don't think we can look at that, but we can.
No, we can't. But we, we as, we as commission members can kind of have a, have a knowledge around that and recommend that, like, we do revise the map at times.
I think the county would be happier with us if we incorporated that area not included that's along Titus.
The Titus Loop.
All, all of Titus Loop as urban growth area. Um, with the idea that eventually we'll serve those that are already at urban density.
I believe that's an erosion hazard area too. The, the rest of the Titus Loop. Yeah, so that was part of the rationale for not including it.
Right. I remember that. I'm just like.
Like on the east side of Titus, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That corner that's not included in any of these.
Yeah. I, I've been telling from county, that if we were to, this is already at, uh, this area is already at, at an urban level. It's, well, it's one acre. Not really. But it, but if you look at it, it, it makes sense to include it. But if you look at the erosion hazard, it doesn't. And if you look at the fact that it's already built out, how many people are going to redevelop? Maybe they would with.
I mean, but what's, what's the erosion hazard factor over other areas? That's my que- I mean, like, yes, it's got erosion hazard, but so does a lot of the stuff.
Pretty much all.
Yeah, let's say, I mean, we're, we're on, we're on conglomerate or we're on like racial, the infill anyway. So like.
So.
So, yeah.
Water values.
I mean, so even if we looked at like, I mean, we have to look at a swap though, right? So we have to, if we remove the Chumstick here.
South of Ranger or Upper Titus, sure.
Oh, so like taking, it, it is kind of a a, uh, merge of one and two, combination one and two. And I don't know what the county's gonna, again, they're having a session next week. I'm introducing this to the council. You were seeing this before the council. I mean, they've already seen it. We're having this discussion before I go to the council next week. So just to explain kind of this is the initial discussion. Emily, do you want to add anything that I?
Uh, you, you did a great job explaining all of the inputs that we used. Um, we did think through this very carefully. There's a lot of back and forth, a lot of, well, what about this and what about that? And so it, yeah, th- these are the three options we came up with. We're happy to revise any of them if you have some, some ideas on how to make this better. And we love to hear it.
And, and maybe even after we hear back from the county next week, we'll have a good, like, if they're just a flat, no, we don't even talk about this. But maybe they have a, well, we would, we like this, we don't like this. Um, maybe there's a happy medium. And so we might come back. But again, this is the first glimpse and just wanted to put it out there. And Emily, thank you. Thank you guys for the time and part work into this. So it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Good content, sweet.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, Emily.
It's nine PM. It's natural ending point. Any other questions or thoughts for tonight? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting, March fifth, twenty-five seconds.
All in favor?
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
All right. We can't get to everything. I'm sorry.
So mean, James. I have to agree with James fully. I'm.
I mean, but like, so the.
I mean, I agreed with you, but I was.
Why don't you give me a good proposal, James says? Give me a good proposal and I will poke hole.